I'm going to call the meeting to order of the City Council of Newport, Vermont, scheduled for Monday, July 7th at 6:00. It's 6:05. Present are Carter Finnegan, Andrew Touche, John Manette, Kevin Charbonneau, Jim Johnson. We have the Director of Public Works in the room, Tom Bernier, and we have Legal Counsel, Dave Ruh, and we have Chip Sterns, our NEMRIC consultant for financial affairs. I think I've got everybody. I'll ask if there are any additions or deletions to this agenda. Jim?
No.
Kevin? John?
No, Carter.
I have one deletion, which is I'm going to remove the possible request from the from MCM Stac Bar regarding a permit to sell alcohol from the consent agenda. They may be back at some point in the future, they just weren't quite ready to do it today. So no additions or deletions other than that. The consent agenda, do I have a motion to... Let me just review what's in it. We've got three sets of AP warrants, two on the same date, so I actually put times in so you could distinguish them. Two from June 30th, one from July 1st. No PR warrants in this packet today. A vendor permit request from Three Roots LLC, and the event request from Kingdom Games for the annual Kingdom Swim that they do the end of July. Do I have any questions about the consent agenda?
I do, since Public Works Director is in here. There is a line for the arsenic plant, and I was curious about what that's for, like who owns it, is that just an operational cost, is that something we pay the state and the state oversees it? I just don't know anything of...
Where was it?
On the first...
Oh, one of the AP warrants, the charge.
Yeah, and I guess what that is about?
Can you tell folks what the charges are related to the arsenic treatment?
Was this a bill?
No, it was, yeah, it was in the invoices that Carter's asking about.
It's like about $167,000, and so I was just like, oh, that's a big number, and I also don't know anything too much about it, other than it's so critical.
Let's find it, because that sounds really high to me. Somebody...
Nothing I can tell you.
Okay.
Let's find it.
Oh, it's an RF, oh, sorry, RF flag. That's an old, old flag.
That's all interest on the loan.
Old interest on the loan.
Principal interest, totally on the loan.
Got it.
That's old, been in there for years.
Okay, so it's like from building it and maintaining it? Okay.
Probably the arsenic plant itself, around the same time we built the new wells.
Stay it, annual water payment essential.
Okay, so it's a once a year, okay, interesting.
Next question.
Thank you.
Should be part of the long-term schedule.
Yeah.
Just to be updated on the special events permit application.
Yeah.
Where the Department had signed off, it's still listing the previous fire chief as the fire chief, and the current fire chief signed it, so we may want to just change that.
All right, yeah, so we're using an old form. So Jim, that's something we might ask you to look for and look at in general, is the names need to be updated on the special events.
Yeah. I'll check.
It's probably one that Phil White had from a previous year that he just filled out and sent in again.
The way Phil White signed it anyway.
Yeah, it's on, it's on.
Good question. Okay, we all understand that the signatures on that are the current staff, so Kevin Lacoste is the fire chief. Okay? Any other questions about the consent agenda? All right, then I'll accept a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments, questions, concerns from folks in the community? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number four, discussion and possible vote regarding the special town meeting that we are expecting to warrant for August 12th, and we have our legal counsel, Dave Ruh, with us this evening. And I'll let folks in the community know that there are some very modest changes from what we put out Saturday night that the council has seen, actually, they saw a version this morning, and there's yet another version. So Dave, as you review this, I'd be grateful if you could just tell folks what those changes are in case they were looking at the old version.
Yeah, I think that it is, the changes were to Article 1 and Article 2. It was mostly wordsmithing in Article 1, I think, for example, to write out 875,000 in the next sense, consistent with the other articles. And Article 2 was revised to make it clear that the bond anticipation note is going to pay you the construction line of credit as well as additional project costs that were incurred. Construction line of credit was, if I'm wrong, it was 2.4 million, and then we incurred 600 more in the project costs that will be wrapped into this bond anticipation note that we're requesting for $3 million, all of which comes in well below the voters' approval of a bond issuance in 2021 for 4.95 million. So the language was just reworded a little bit there, intent being the same and also referencing the city charter, because that's required for bond anticipation notes.
So maybe if it's okay with you, Dave, I'll just refer to each one of these and just give folks the context one more time, and then you...
You know what, Rick, I'm sorry. I was looking, when I was just writing this, I was looking at the warning that was on the council packet, so I was looking at the one, not the new language, but the old language. So the new language, this Article 1 has not really changed, it was just to write out 875, but we deleted the reference to the charter in Article 2, and clarified how the $3 million band is coming together with the payoff of the construction line of credit and the additional project costs that were incurred since then.
And if, so I just want to pause for a second, let's go back for a second and go one by one, David, if that's okay.
Yes.
So on the first one, just so everybody's on the same page, this was originally approved by the council on March 1st, 2022, actually by the voters, on March 1st, 2022, for $800,000 to purchase and equip the new fire truck. The cost of the actual fire truck that's going to be delivered this fall, we are told, is going to come in somewhere in the neighborhood of $875,000, I'm told, or maybe a little less. So what we're asking for in Article 1 from the voters is permission to borrow up to $875,000 to cover the full cost. Any questions about that one?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ian.
The draft, is that the one that is current?
Yes.
Okay. It doesn't say, it doesn't say, okay. It doesn't really give any indication as to why we're paying $75,000 more. And I think it's important, especially when we have all these other ones, to explain to the voters that because of a renegotiation of contract, the actual cost after so many years has passed, however briefly you want to put it in, is an additional, up to an additional $75,000, because it explains for those people who aren't going to be able to make it to all these meetings, why you're really asking, you asked us originally to pay up to $800,000 for a full fire truck, and now it's costing $75,000 more because of renegotiations, and we can understand that. Other than that, it seems like, why did you say it was going to cost $800,000 and now it's costing 875? So I think the warning should let people know in simple language what, why each of these are happening, so they can say, yeah, I can buy that.
Okay, so Dave, let me ask you a question about that.
Can I ask?
Go ahead, actually, go ahead.
So if you remember correctly, the night I came with Chuck and did the presentation, and it was $800,000, up to $800,000 for the truck, and then there was an additional $100,000 for, to outfit, do a lot of outfitting for the truck, so hose, a lot of the miscellaneous nozzles and everything that was needed. At that time, we were told that there was money set aside for the fire department that they had to cover those costs. We had up to $100,000, so we didn't have to ask for $900,000. We had, it was, we had the $100,000 set aside for...
I remember that. But now when you come back to us, and now you can't get it from the fire department because...
So actually, hold on, Ian, I get your point, and I appreciate the clarification. What I want to ask is a process question of our attorney, which is, Dave, do you recommend, I think this is a fair point, that we should have some kind of an explanation for voters? And so I guess there are one of two ways I can imagine doing that, and I want to know if they both are appropriate or if only one of them is appropriate. So one is, we could add to the article itself, another is that I think we could create a companion piece that would have explanation for any one of these in addition, is that correct?
Correct. So you can create an information sheet, for lack of a better way of putting it, or an FAQ in 21st century terms, that explains each article. The necessity resolution that you will also have to vote on today explains the necessity from the council's perspective for putting this before the voters. But we do not recommend that council include explanatory sentences or phrases in warnings of special meetings instead, especially where they are asking for voter approval of indebtedness. We like to keep them simple, short, and ask only the voters the question before the voters, so as to eliminate any confusion. So I agree that the council can produce an information sheet and explain why we are here. I misconstrued your original question to explain the articles that way, I'm happy to do so as we go through the remainder of the articles, but I cannot recommend that council change the language of Article 1 as proposed to include anything other than the question presented.
Can I ask, when would the fact, the fact...
Well, we haven't gotten there yet, so hold on. Pam?
You just lost me on that one, and you lost me because what you've just done is describe voters as too simple to understand your high-flying concept. That's not okay.
So just to be clear, Pam, so I want to be careful. That's not, no one used anything like that language.
Keeping it simple?
Keeping the language of the resolution simple is very different than an accusation that people are too simple to understand. They mean entirely different things.
Don't confuse it with an explanation.
So what we're saying, no, what I'm hearing our attorney say is that it is best practice to keep the actual language of the article that you are warning as simple as possible, and that it's totally appropriate to create an informational sheet or an explanation to go with it. So I think those are not the same thing, I just want to be fair about how we characterize.
In fact, the city did just that in 2021, when it voted on the original bond for the water tower project, there was an information sheet that contained the facts as to what the voters, what the bond was asking for, and what the private components were, and as long as that information sheet sticks to the facts, we have no concerns.
And when would it be given out?
So hold on, please. So I'm going to recommend that we not try and insert the language here, but that we come back as a council two weeks from now and review an information sheet together that has any clarifying information we want, and we'll do that together with members of the community, so that we end up with an explanation that satisfies everyone that we're being straightforward.
Because like when I hear an explanation or supporting evidence in a vote, it just feels really icky, right? We're trying to lead or support versus it should be pretty cut and dry of like, this is what we're asking, but I definitely support the idea of passing with accurate time enough information, so we can explain as much as we want, but also that the voters are informed, but I would not say it should be on these articles.
John?
There's also a related sort of process of logistics question as to where and in what context it's appropriate to present the information sheet, clearly any medium before the day of the vote, but David can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there are restrictions on the ability to have such sheets within the voting place.
Is that correct, Dave? Can we, can this be given out together with the ballot if it comes from council and it's approved?
The information sheet cannot, the warning can, certainly the warning is there, but my recollection is that promotional materials are not to be posted in the polling places for information sheets. With charter amendments, it's a little bit different, there you can have the whole language of the charter when you're voting, but it's been a long time since I've looked at this, so, but I do know that you are allowed to create information sheets that describe the nature of the articles you're putting before the voters.
Okay, so it sounds like if we don't put the language in the warning itself, when we come back to have a conversation about this two weeks from now, we would be able to create an information sheet, but we can't, we can't hand it to the voters as they pick up their ballot?
Correct.
Basically.
Right.
Yeah, it has to be available in advance or in different locations, it can't be in the polling place. I remember this very issue from back when I was on school board, because we had the same question and received the same advice from another municipal law firm. Under no circumstance do you provide the information sheet within the polling place, because regardless of how neutral it is, it will be perceived by some as slanted.
So then I'm going to put it to council. Given that set of realities, are you comfortable proceeding with the language in Article 1 as it's been presented, or do you feel need to try and add any kind of a further explanation in Article 1?
I'm fine with it as presented.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, let's go on to Article 2, we're going to, we'll come back to vote on the whole thing shortly. So Article 2 is the, effectively, the bridge load note in anticipation of bond income for the bond that's already been approved by voters for 4.85 million dollars minus any grant money that we took in. So effectively, this is saying that we would borrow up to $3 million to pay the remaining, whatever's on the line of credit and any other bills that we have incurred in the process of carrying out this project in particular. So council, do you have any questions about that one?
And this is basically just gap financing until we get...
That's right. This buys us a year, we're asking for the voters' permission to extend what has been a short-term solution with a construction line of credit, basically to manage that by going another year with a short-term loan while we arrange the bond that was already approved through, hopefully, Vermont Bond Bank. Any questions?
Wait a minute, this will probably pay off with proceeds from the bond when the bond closes, hopefully in the, what is it, the February, April of next year.
Yes, which, I mean, the money from which we wouldn't see until April or so, I'm told.
Right.
Right? But it also gives us, if for some reason we can't manage to get into that pool, if we borrow for a year, we could theoretically be in the bond pool in August as well, if we bought ourselves a full year. Ian?
Yeah, the 4.8, I'm sorry. The 4.985 million dollars is not mentioned in Article 2, but I would beg to differ with Mr. Ruh about the fact that 300,000 is a hell of a lot less than 4.985, because the voters never approved 4.985, they approved 4.985 minus any grant money or any other kind of funds like that that were received. And we know that in the end, we, I think, we got about 1.9 million that way or so. So it is not well, the 3 million is not well below the 4.9, because it wasn't 4.9, we approved, we approved 4.9 minus any grant money or other funds like that that we received. But number two, with respect to Article 2 now as it's currently written, it says that we're not going to get, we're not going to exceed 3 million, it says to be issued to refund the 2.4 million construction line of credit. There's been nothing established that says we have used the full 2.4 million. And then to refund the interfund loans from the general fund to the water fund in the aggregate amount of 600,000, there's been no proof that 600,000 dollars was used to finance these alleged additions and improvements being made as approved by the voters in March of 2021. So I would suggest that there needs to be a reworking there of the language, because we have no proof of either of those two things, and particularly of the 600,000 dollars. And so why should, why should the citizens of Newport approve a general obligation bond anticipation not to exceed 3 million when we don't know that we should be anywhere near there?
Because we don't have, we have no time to get the answer to this question. So the sure answer is, what the, what the Article 2 is calling for is approval to borrow short-term up to, and not to exceed, $3 million as needed to pay for direct project expenses, which we are hot on the trail of trying to track down. So we're not, we're not asking here for permission to borrow that money to spend on other things. It's clear, I believe it's clear in the language, that the only things that can be debited against this are things that were spent on the construction of the water tower itself. And the amount of 3 million is only what we are, we're basically asking for the same thing that the voters asked for, that the voters approved years ago, four years ago, when we didn't know how much this was going to cost exactly, right? And we still don't know exactly what the final accounting is going to be. I suspect you're right, I suspect it will be considerably less than 3 million dollars if all goes well, and we won't have to borrow that full 3 million.
But are you borrowing, this is not a line of credit, is it? This is an actual loan.
This is a one-year loan.
Of 3 million dollars?
That's right, to pay off both whatever line of credit we have, whatever we've spent on the line of credit at the completion of the project, which will be completed well in advance of this...
So, but you are borrowing 3 million dollars?
No, we're borrowing up to 3 million dollars. We're only, we don't know how much yet, we just don't know yet. Chip, Chip has not had a chance to dig into those numbers yet.
So you're not going to borrow in this loan anymore than how much you actually spent?
Absolutely not, that's right.
All right.
Right.
Yeah. It's, that, all we're asking for here really in effect is the same thing that voters already approved, which is up to that 4.985, thank you for the correction, million minus the public, I'm sorry, the grant money we took in. We're just saying, we still need to do that, we just can't do it with the bond that was approved already, we need a short-term spending.
Okay.
Okay? Are there any other, Dave, do you want to correct anything I just said, just to make sure the record's straight?
No, I'm fine, just to clarify that, you know, right now, we are just approving a warning, a warning to ask these voters the questions. It is not a done deal, I am stretched with the imagination, and the voters still get to decide whether the city should get a grant of bond anticipation note in this amount. So right now, we're just approving the language we're putting before the voters. It does not mean that the note is approved and the loan, that the money hasn't been borrowed.
Correct.
Is it relevant to point out like the two grants that we're waiting on? Oh, sorry, is, I, I was just rushing you. There's a couple of the grants that will help us with the water tower, we can't actually receive until the end of the project is completely built and finalized, so that's, I think there's a couple little stopgap measures within this Article 2, because we are anticipated, they're secured by all means, like, grants these days are a little rocky, but they're solid, but unfortunately, they won't come back until later.
You did get all the offer money, though.
Yes.
It was 1.3 million.
Yes, that's all I need. And Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but the conversation I had with Tom last week is that it looks as if all of the work will be completed, at this point, we're projecting even the landscaping work and that kind of stuff around the water tower will be completed by, you're figuring roughly the middle of August, right? So we'll have plenty of time before the line of credit for construction is due to do the final accounting and make sure that what we're actually borrowing to cover is appropriate. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, shall we move on to Article 3? This one is the general obligation bond that we're asking for in the amount of $1,800,000 that we would ask the voters to give us approval for to refund the deficit in the general fund account. I'm going to ask up here first, Ian, are there any questions from council? Okay, go ahead, Ian.
Okay. This one is particular, and I think the next one. Seems to me that because we're on Australian ballot now, we modify what the charter, in essence, that modifies how a special meeting is called when City Council finds out that at the end of the year it can't pay all of its revenue. That's covered in the city charter, it's in the Vermont statutes also, under revenues, credit, and appropriations. And it specifically says that when you're in that situation at the end of any fiscal year, and or necessary or desirable expenditures to be made that you can't make from the revenue that you received, you should call a special meeting of the legal voters to consider what shall be done. And so in the old days, before we had a special, before we had the Australian ballot, you would say, hey, look, it's looking a little difficult at the end of the year, I can't pay my bills, we can't, the city can't pay all of its bills, let's call it a special meeting. And then you explain, that's why we're calling the special meeting, and a group of voters would sit around and talk, what could we do? Well, we could do X, or we could do Y, and you would make suggestions, and we would make suggestions, and we'd all come up with a solution that we agreed to. This way, when we do the Australian ballot, you give us one choice. You know, maybe there were three things we could have done to remedy things, but we only got the one, we can either say yes, or we can say no. And so I think that with respect to Article 3 of the 1.8 million, there's no explanation of how the deficit arose, when, how long the deficit has been in existence for, we're just asking voters to say, we owe 1.8 million more, we'll pay it out, the voters will pay it out of their pockets over a period of time. And so with respect to Article 3, as with respect to Article 1, I think the voters are entitled to an explanation of how we got there, 1.8 million. And I think while, clearly, Mr. Ruh would tend to disagree with me and say, the articles have to be simple, some voters are only going to see this, and they're going to say, I didn't pay my taxes regularly for the last 25 years, and now they tell me that they have, they were supposed to balance every year, and now they tell me that they're behind by way of 1.8 million, and they didn't even tell me why. I think voters are entitled to an explanation, and I wish the explanation would be at the time they're going to vote, but it's got to be some time. But it's got to be some time.
I'll just, so I want to be clear. I agree that they deserve an explanation. And I believe that the appropriate way to do that would be through this back FAQ or informational sheet, whatever we want to call it, along with any public meetings that we agree to hold, which I believe we should be talking about tonight as well. And I'll just say, Anne, you know, I think you're right. By the time you get to an Australian ballot, you know, you really can't put a variety of options in front of people. On the other hand, we've just spent the last four months holding the most open and accountable process we possibly could for anybody to pay attention to. And we've been headline news almost every week for now three months dealing with this problem. So it's not that we're not being clear about what, you know, we're being as clear as we possibly can about what's going on here, given the limitations of an Australian ballot. Because you're right, I'd way rather have a town meeting where we can talk about this. So I do believe we should have it, we should have an explanation. We've had, we've given that explanation repeatedly. And I think we can give it again in a fat sheet. Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Well, and to, to that end, general law provides only three actions for the legislative body when presented with the deficit. And it's either you refund it with a bond or you create, you impose special taxes in one of two ways. So the city has, its options here are limited by law. And this is one route. Another route is a special tax to make up that deficit in one assessment. Or in the next tax year, you can levy a tax of 5% on the grant list or such multiples of 5% is, as are needed to pay off and liquidate that deficit. So, you know, there are three routes under the statute. We have picked the one that is the least painful, we think, and the one that makes the most sense. And the alternatives are ad hoc additional taxes, so.
Which certainly belong in an informational sheet. Voters should know if they don't pass this, what, what the, you know, what the charter is going to require.
Or decrease expenses.
Yeah, it's not a charter.
No, at this point, that's actually not appropriate in the charter. You can't decrease expenses by this amount. So that, I don't think that's an option. So we really, we have three, I'm happy to have those go into the informational sheet. Because I want people to understand what the implication is if they say no to it. Go ahead, Laurie.
I'll just say, as a member of the Finance Committee Task Force, that I appreciate what you just said, Dave, because that's been, that's the wording that I've been looking for. You know, what happens if we don't? And, and I've been as upfront and honest with people when they ask me. I think it's vitally important that we know how we got where we are. And the other piece of this that I just want to say is that we, in, in the last, what? Two and a half, three months, basically, we've gotten to a place where we have to ask for this money. And now we're going to start digging deeper to find ways to look at our expenses, to figure out what we can do moving forward so we don't get ourselves into this position in the future. And that's really important because I keep hearing people say, in many different places, very inappropriate things like, why aren't we cutting expenses now instead of later? We can't, we couldn't. We have to do this first to get to the place where we can actually begin to, to cut things. Because if we don't approve this stuff, like Dave just said, we're going to be paying it out of pocket, like immediately, so.
Okay, anybody else want to speak to this one? Council? All right, let's go on to Article 4. Suspect a lot of similar conversation.
Yes.
Article 4 is regarding the $1 million owed by the, in the due to others balance sheet line for the sewer fund as an obligation to the general fund. This is asking voters for a million, permission to borrow a million dollars and finance that in order to be able to pay back that general, that obligation to the general fund. Counsel, questions about this one? Anne?
Yes. Here, Dan. A deficit in the, in the sewer fund just doesn't, that doesn't explain really the situation and why, how it occurred, why it occurred, when it occurred, how long it's been occurring. And I think the voters, before they vote on this one, should, they thought they were paying their water and sewer bills as they should have been. And now they find out there's a $1 million deficit. I mean, I, I saw it happen. I mean, you can't pretend you're going to take in more income than you actually are taking in over a five or six-year period and expect that, and that's not going to happen. And it took me, you know, till last year or the year before to figure that out and start complaining about it. But the council, we're, we're just not seeing it. So I think, I think the, that people are entitled to know why that's there.
We agree entirely. So, I mean, counsel, you should expect, I think it's a great idea to put an informational sheet with this. We'll bring it back and we can cuss and discuss this, this one two weeks from now as well. I, I have no disagreement about the fact that we need to be clear with the voters about how this happened. My judgment is it was an eight-year lag, not a five. We went eight years with, with deficit spending in water, in sewer, without addressing it with any kind of a rate increase.
I'll agree with you.
Okay. It's a happy coincidence when that happens, isn't it?
Just, just one last piece of this so everyone's aware. In addition to, because of the Australian ballot nature of these, there's going to be a public informational hearing the night before the vote where all of these questions can be asked, answered, and explained. But as part of this morning as well as any additional meetings that council may want to call.
Yeah, at the very least, we're going to do it that night. And I guarantee it will be an open conversation. I would love to have the room packed that night.
It would be really smart to do it before then.
Well, no, yeah. As, as Dave just said, at the very least. I agree, I think the council should be saying, what other opportunities can we create for the community to engage? Absolutely. Okay, Article 5. I asked Dave to include this. I'm not at all sure we want it, council members. So this is one that you all need to decide about tonight. This would be to address the fact that we know now that we made at least a $220,000 error in the budget that, for fiscal year '25, '26. Just remind folks, the way that happened is there's been a practice, again, for seven years now, since 2018, of budgeting state municipal tax income as if it was revenue, when we had already counted it as revenue in our overall projected tax income. So with that, in effect, we were double, double counting that revenue. We've talked about this now ad nauseam for over a month and a half since Chip brought it to us, I think. And one way to address that would be to ask voters for permission in this election to reconfigure the, the tax itself to make sure that we cover that $220,000. I think the council has an opportunity here to go either that direction or to say, we're going to go back to the drawing board and look for other ways that we can try and cut $220,000 out of the budget that the voters approved and, and, and see if we can, and not see if, and, and commit. Whatever we do, we've got to commit that we're going to run a non-deficit year here. We're going to commit at at least zero or better for the end of the year. So I'd love to hear what your thoughts are about whether you'd like to go back to the voters for that permission or you'd like us to have, as a council and department, and department heads together, a process by which we try and look carefully at the budget we've already passed and look for ways that you've either made other errors or places where we could afford to cut back for a year while we cover this potential deficit.
I would love to say that we could be able to go through the budget and save the $220,000, but I am not confident 100% that we can do that and save that amount of money. So if we don't ask for it and we can only come up with 150, we're still short. You know, we're still, we're still not able to fulfill that $220,000 out of deficit.
Yeah, I think I agree with Andrew there. There's no, no assurance that we'd be able to pull that off, especially because we're already in fiscal year. It's not like we have the luxury of two or three months to, to work on it.
Is this one of those?
Go ahead.
Is this one of those things where if the voters didn't approve it, it would essentially be in effect? Like, take, I mean, this is like, in my, we were just discussing, which is we need to have a balanced budget. Or is this, that would be saying we need to take back 200? Like, what's, I guess the light of acknowledging mistake.
If the voters, if we put this before the voters and they don't pass it, then I would come back to the council and say, we don't have a choice now because we will not deficit spend this year. We have an obligation to create a balanced budget. So that means we have to go back to the drawing board and figure out where we're going to make, make those, those adjustments to make it work.
Which means we could be cutting some, some big stuff, meaning, which in some cases can be okay, but how much can you cut in certain areas and still be able to do the stuff that, you know, that, that all of us expect, you know, that.
Chip, this is putting you on the spot and I apologize, but the question, I have a specific question and I want to hear your general thoughts about this. Have you had a chance to look carefully enough at the budget? Because I confess, I did not do it this week, to know whether, how much we have obligated to special funds like we have in years past? And is there enough to, that we could unobligate some of those obligations in that budget in order to make up some chunk of this, in your judgment?
Yes. In my judgment, yes. You have, in the past, again, by spreadsheet, made a whole lot of commitments such as the $100,000 from fire truck that you really didn't have. Talking about the other article. In this next budget, you also made commitments against those same types of reserves for the future, which, if you don't have $220,000, you can't commit to adding to those reserves, which have all now been sat at zero. Because the council relieved the obligation, then committed to all of the reserves that were general fund oriented. And in the new budget, by practice, you were going to commit more money into those same reserves, which are now at zero. In the new budget, if the voters don't approve raising to 220, I see those commitments to those reserves being eliminated from being funded.
I'll confess to y'all, I wish we had another month before we had to make this decision. Because I feel like I've been so focused on the big financial picture that I have not taken the time to go deep into the question that Chip's responding to here. But, and so therefore, here's what I don't feel like I can answer with confidence tonight. I can't tell you in that budget, you know, some amount of money that we say we're putting aside actually is to be spent this year on things like paving roads, right? And other portions of it may be for future, future purchases that aren't in this fiscal year. And I don't know, and I doubt, Tom, you can do it off the top of your head either, exactly what's what. So there's some room to flex in there, I expect, but I can't guarantee it. And I wish we didn't have to make the decision tonight.
Just, we, we also have to think that if we, if we cut something, if we go through this, whatever we cut, it's going to make it that much worse. It's going to be, we're going to be a year behind, further, a year behind on projects such as paving or, or something like that. So that means that we're going to be, we're going to be even further behind if we don't ask for this and be able to maintain at least a, that's my, that's my opinion.
It is easier to ask and we see that it's never had asked.
Chip does have a way with words, doesn't he?
I'm not a politician, but I play one on TV.
Go ahead, Laurie.
I was just going to say, is it, is it too much, is it being too optimistic to think that you approve Article 5 and then possibly by August 12th, not have to request it?
Is that even possible, Dave? Can we warn it and then take it off the ballot if it's unnecessary?
No, once it's warned, it has to be voted. But that doesn't mean you have to spend the money necessarily or actually. You're, you're seeking authorization to impose an additional tax. You have that, if you get that authorization, you still can decide whether you need to do that or not.
Almost in, in effect, like our, we will not exceed this $3 million limit.
So, so to that, I think at one point, Chip, in one of our earlier meetings when we discussed that 220, there was a comment somewhere that really, when you spread that 220 across the grant list, it's not a lot of money per person. And I don't, I don't know if we've had a chance to decide what that amount was.
So in simple terms, $31,000 is approximately what is raised by one cent on the grant list. So if you take 220 and you vote it by 31, you're looking at seven cents.
Seven cents per $100 of value. Yes, per $100 of value, right?
Yes.
So if I have a $200,000 house, it would be seven cents times 200, 2,000, right? Seven cents times 2,000.
Less 40.
Which would come out to less than 200 bucks. It'd be, it would be, it's not.
140.
Yeah, there we go, about 140, 150 bucks. Yeah, because that, that one cent thing can play tricks on you. You got to be careful with it. Anne?
I just have two points. One is with respect to deciding not to ask for the 220. And, and you know, like, I don't want to spend an extra penny. But on this thought, you already have Walmart money that you only borrowed for five days or whatever. But that money's got to be put back. And that's about, I don't know, 300 and some odd thousand. And that wasn't budgeted for. It wasn't budgeted in this budget that you were going to have taken it for another purpose and then going to have to put it back in. So you already have another 340 that you have to make up from.
Well, that one's built into the, the cash flow document. That's not about budgeting.
Oh, it's not about budgeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we're not asking for, for more money in the '25, '26 fiscal year to cover that $350,000.
Okay.
Total.
Okay. Thanks for correcting that. The second point is, obviously, if you go with Article 5, Article 5 doesn't, doesn't explain to the voter. You came to me, you asked for 5.267 million. I approved 5.267 million. Me and all the other taxpayers, we approved that. And that was supposed to be for all the general operation and to cover all the liabilities and da, 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 da. And now you're coming back and you're asking for another 220 and you're not explaining to me why you need it.
You're going to love my magic words.
Yes.
The FAQ. That's what, all of this, that's the problem actually, right? When you look at the amount of background material that we've been working on for four months, the point is, it is complicated. And we, you know, that's why we have dozens of newspaper articles that have been written about it over the last few months, trying to help people understand it and trying to help ourselves understand it. So I, I do believe that that's a valid point. Whatever we do with Article 5 demands an explanation.
And it's the same explanation in part for the $1.8 million bond.
Do you want to say another word about that, Chip? Sorry. What's the rest of that sentence?
That's it? It's the same explanation for the $1.8 million bond in part because the municipal tax adjustments were never extra money. So you were always shorting yourself annually in the amount to be raised by property taxes. And all we're trying to do is catch that in fiscal year '26 before we send out bills.
Okay. So I'm going to create an opportunity, which I am not, I have no expectation council wants to take, for any council member to make any motion regarding the five for any council member to make any motion regarding the five articles. So if you want to remove Article 5, for instance, this would be your moment to make a motion to do so. And if you don't, the next move will be to vote on the entire warning as written, with the understanding that we will be talking two weeks from now about some kind of an FAQ, information issue. So are there any changes that council would like to propose to the articles as presented?
No.
Okay. John, you're okay? Andrew?
I'm good.
Turner?
I'm good as well.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to warn the special meeting to be held on August 12th, 2025, as using the language presented in this most recent copy, which is the hard copy version that's labeled "draft" in front of you tonight, okay? Do I have such a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further conversation y'all would like to have about this? I think we've heard lots from the folks in the community, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The motion carries. We did it.
We have the resolutions next.
Okay, so now, Dave, walk us through that, because I don't, I'm not sure I understand these as well. So help me understand.
In order to, in order to take out loans or incur indebtedness for various reasons, councils need to find that, and through these resolutions, making finding that it is necessary for the city to incur that indebtedness. That is essentially what these are, it is not strict necessity, but it is necessary for the city, for example, to raise an additional $75,000 in order to fund the purchase of this fire truck. The same is true and generally follows with the necessity resolution for the water tower. And that we find it necessary to get a bond anticipation note in the amount of up to $3 million in order to close out that construction line of credit and pay other project expenses. So that's what the necessity resolution does for what we now, what you guys approved as Article 2. Similarly, with Articles 4 and 5 and the deficit refund obligations, these necessity resolutions find that there was a deficit and that we, this council finds it's necessary to vote before the voters whether they should incur indebtedness to try and pay those off before the end of the '26 fiscal year. As I stated earlier, the alternatives are rather draconian taxes being added either one time or to your next tax bill. The same is true for the general fund of up to 1.8 million deficit, and then for the sewer fund, the $1 million deficit. With each resolution comes a form of ballot that is reflective of what the voters are going to see on August 12th. In order to, once we find, when we finalize the resolutions for Articles 3 and 4, we will also include a signed copy of the warning. But each one of these resolutions, I would like the council to pass separately. So it would be, for example, a motion to approve the necessity resolution to increase the bond amount from 800 to 875,000 for the purchase of a fire truck. Second vote. And then similarly, we'll go, we'll just go down the list and do all three. I can, if the council prefers, I can provide the motion language. I will try to speak slowly so that Jim can capture that, because I didn't actually write it out before you.
Would that be helpful to the council? Okay, so why don't we take them one by one? We'll have our attorney give us the motion, invite a motion. If someone feels comfortable making it, we'll accept the motion and then speak, and then go ahead and take the vote.
Okay, so I would propose that a counselor make a motion to approve the necessity resolution for borrowing to acquire a necessary capital asset as drafted in order to increase the bonded indebtedness to purchase a fire truck from 800,000 to 875,000.
Is there someone who would like to make that motion?
Someone.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll just pause to see if there's any further comment. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
I said yay.
Got it. Motion carries. So I've, if you'll pause just a moment, Dave, I'm going to pass the first one down and ask for signatures on it. And Jim, remind me when we get done these resolutions that we need to go back and get signatures on the original warning as well.
As you're doing that, and I've already reminded Jim, but everybody should know that, you know, the special meeting warning is going to be posted and published in more places than is typically required because it's asking for approval of indebtedness. It'll be posted up with five, these five places and published. Going by memory, I think it's five weeks in a row on the same day, no earlier than five and no later than 10 days before the date of the meeting. So everyone will see this warning in the newspaper every week, probably pretty much, for the next month and a half.
Actually, it's three weeks.
Three?
Yeah.
That's what, yeah, if we're going by memory.
All right. Okay. We've all signed off on the first resolution, Dave, go ahead with the second one, please.
Okay. The second one, a counselor, I recommend a counselor make a motion to approve the necessity resolution refunding short-term borrowing, which will, which finds that it is necessary for the city to seek a bond anticipation note to pay expenses associated with the water tower project in an amount not to exceed $3 million.
Make that motion.
I have a motion from Carter Finnegan, do I have a second? From Andrew Touche. Any further comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. I'll pass that one down for signature. Hold on just a second, Dave.
You're going faster every time, Dave.
Sorry, Chip.
That's all right, Chip's got his trusty cassette player, he'll do just fine.
Yeah, I can tell.
So I'm watching the clock, that must be the...
All right, Dave, we're ready for your third one.
Okay, the third one is, I recommend a counselor make a motion to approve the necessity resolution for refunding of a deficit in the general fund to allow the city to borrow up to $1.8 million to refund the fiscal year 2025 deficit.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Anne, I have a second. Any further comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Pass that one down.
I'll second it then.
Kevin is done. Okay, we're ready for the next one. Go ahead, Dave.
I recommend a counselor make a motion to approve the necessity resolution refunding a deficit in the sewer fund to allow the city to incur indebtedness in the amount of $1 million to refund the fiscal year 2025 deficit in the sewer fund.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Andrew, a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second. Any further comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. And I'll pass that one down. Dave, while they're doing that, I have a question for you. I labeled "draft" on that last version you sent me of the special meeting warning. If I cross out the word "draft" and write "as approved" and put my initials and the date on it, can we use that copy for our signatures?
I would, the one thing that's missing on the first page is a Zoom link for the public informational meeting.
All right. So what I should probably do is, when we get to the end of the meeting tonight, I'll ask everybody to stick around and not close the meeting, and I'll go print, I'll go put in the special warning. That Zoom link should be for the Monday night previous, so the 11th, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, so I'll create that and print a copy for us all to sign at the end of the meeting, okay?
Yeah, I will say, normally, we'd have these documents prepared very well before the council meeting, but with the holiday and other items, it was a little bit of a flurry. So they're not, they're more, they're in almost final form, and they came in a little bit later than I normally would like before a council meeting. So I appreciate councilors keeping the lid up.
Well, I appreciate your apology, and we all appreciate the fact that you scrambled over the last week to make all this happen, so thank you.
Yeah, I agree. Kudos to Bob Fletcher as well for his expertise in this area.
Absolutely. Okay, Jim, have you got all four of those?
I gotta go.
Okay. All right, Dave, anything else you want to impart to us tonight, assuming that we'll go ahead and print that warning correctly and then sign it by the end of the meeting?
Nothing this evening, just please send me copies once they're available tomorrow.
Jim, you'll take care of that? Okay.
Yeah, David, I have a question. Is there any need or is it helpful for you to review the FAQ document after we draft it that pairs? Or is it kind of...
I would like to review it in, in, as John mentioned, it is important for such documents to be devoid of opinion and puffery or solicitation. You know, just the facts, stick to the facts. That's very important when you develop that. So, you know, I read through them and just make sure that they're, you know, they're plain and simple, presenting things in a straightforward fashion.
Get that to you with the good head.
That's a great question, Carter, thank you. Okay, Dave will release you, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Everybody have a good night.
Good night.
Okay. That was item four. We're going to move on now to item five on the agenda, reviewing the initial balance sheet for fiscal year '25, '26.
And did I have any questions on that?
I would, all I've done is like kind of compared and contrasted the last time you walked through, and I'm just seeing how the numbers have changed.
But I'm sure it's...
Yes, exactly, it was exciting, I was like, oh, that number's gone away, in a good way, it's gone down. So that's my homework report, I don't have necessarily questions.
And that's what I have done as well, I had time to compare, and that's, that's what I have done.
Okay. Let me, we did not post them against the falsified budget of $220,000. You can see that the Walmart fund, the line down, remains with $36,000 in it. And it was suggested by one of the tax force members that we simply do not put the money back into that account to earn 0.4% interest when we're paying five, two, five interest expense on the line of credit. It doesn't make sense to put the money back just to spend more money on interest. We have the reserve money still identified. The liquid property taxes, this is all years, cumulative, that are still owed, just under $540,000. This does not impact budget, but would impact cash if all the liquid taxpayers tomorrow came in and paid the amounts they owe. I'm going to try to scroll down. Top line, miscellaneous receivables. Our miscellaneous bills sent out, some of them to the state, some of them to other municipalities around us for services rendered by the city. The next most important line, due to and from other funds, 874,000. This number is now under $1 million. When we began, four months ago, this number, that'll one, a million. So we have drastically altered how much money is owed between funds. The tax anticipation LOC note reflects now the $500,000 we have drawn out.
That's the first line under liabilities, for those of us having a hard time reading, right?
Yes. First line under liabilities. See all that, it's normal activity to pass through. And we can thank those taxpayers that gave us money in advance by $31,000. They've overpaid their taxes, they'll get a credit on their first bill when it goes out. At the bottom of the screen, real appraisal reserve. This again is supposed to represent cash in the bank, which right now is borrowed cash in the bank, $145,000 for the real appraisal. And when I go to the next page down, records preservation, that is $4 per page typically for recordings that gets held in reserve for anything to be worked on from out of the vault. The next line down is the Walmart reserve. Of all the Walmart funds, we still are holding a value of $286,131 that is obligated by city council in theory, we're hoping for the TIF development. And then the last item there, $240,800, is the NERC grant funds match. This number was only represented on a spreadsheet and has never been part of the financials until about two weeks ago. So we're already, we are looking at a situation where the current year fund balance is $220,000 in the good, nothing to do with the tax anticipation of municipal payments. That's just your general fund. At the present time, it looks healthy, but we haven't completed the audit. And I know a few of us are meeting with the auditors tomorrow afternoon by video to make a plan to get that done. Next fund is the monitoring management fund, no different than it was two weeks ago when we looked. It's indebted to the general fund, it's not making enough money to cover its own costs, so it's a question of whether or not it should still exist. Project fund, carrying the same $17 that was carrying two weeks ago. Cemetery fund is an investment fund that Jim... that Jim, the treasurer, is working on getting some of those investments converted to cash so that the cash of $43,539.39 can be put back into the general fund. This fund does not raise enough money on its own to pay for mowing. And so over the years, I believe, mowing has been paid, and it's just been seen as an obligation owed back to the general fund. In the next budget, you probably want to consider putting mowing right into the general fund as a cost of doing business. Early S9 is a fund, trust and agency fund, flows nothing to or from the general fund, self-contained, I'm not sure what its purpose is, but it sits out there in its self-sustaining, not used for anything else. CDG funds, I'm sure, over the years, these accounts were set up to meet the obligations of non-interest-bearing accounts for projects that have gone on. I don't know of any current projects still going on, so it is my contention that probably all three of these accounts could be closed and put into the general fund, because there's probably no purpose for them existing any longer. Public safety, primarily police. A series of grants, justice and treasury are typically grant-oriented, preloaded amounts of money that come in and are used at the discretion of the police chief for a purpose. Stone Garden was explained to me as something working in conjunction with the feds and the border. And that, right now, there has been money that has come in, and so the general fund owes this fund $1,249.87. Yet to be determined on which area that's owed, Stone Garden, treasury, justice, or Star Creek. But we'll have to make the adjustment of where the cash needs to go. But I know there's also been some Stone Garden expenses put in the general fund, which possibly belong in this fund. Recreation Trust. Same discussion as to all of these accounts that are bank accounts, total of $29,000. What of these are actually required to exist? When did they get started, and are they still active and performing for a purpose? Again, another $28,000 that could be closed out and put into the general fund checkbook. Right now, this fund owes the general fund $41,165.43. And sitting on the balance sheet underneath that is an obligation to pay an additional $54,880. And when that is paid, that's gonna jump that number to $95,000 that the general fund is owed from the ref activities.
If I could just stop you there, Chip. I think, am I correct that we think that's largely related to the construction of the Garner Park playground, the improvements?
Very well could be, because I have seen charges for Garner Power Coop in general fund and in this fund. And so, as Frank was saying, it's all over the place. And so we need to consolidate for grant reporting, we need to consolidate for our own financial reporting. These are known conditions that have yet to be resolved simply due to the amount of time it takes to follow through and check every invoice against every other.
And like reflecting on the last balance, sorry, reflecting on the last balance sheet that we saw, this match, or sorry, this recreation trust fund only had less than $10,000 in the due to. So I would suspect my understanding of that project and also my involvement on the recreation committee is like that.
Okay, let's keep going.
Sewer fund. Top line, yet to be collected in sewer piece, $145,389.80. Most of the rest of that is referred to as fixed assets, of which they are not cash. They are simply a value of infrastructure that we have. And they typically mask a cash deficit, because they are so large in number. And at the bottom line of the last asset, due to and from other funds, the sewer fund is now down to owing the general fund $898,609.36. It was over $1,004,000 four months ago.
That money to pay down the sewer deficit, correct?
Correct. And we also de-obligated commitment to those funds at a later date. We closed the accounts as one step that we de-committed any obligation to them just last week. Standard vanilla for the liabilities. You can see in there, that in the middle of the liabilities, your long-term debt, no payments. So we would be adding a line in here, should the voters approve the $1,000,000 for deficit coverage, being up to $1,000,000 for deficit coverage. That's why I was driving, this unbalanced is an illusion, because in those fund balances, it says you're good at $1,000,001. But the reality is all of that's fixed assets. Right? If you took away all the fixed assets here and there, it's solid, we can pick up and sell somebody a sewer plant. Water fund, water rent, you see with the $95,000. Again, the same situation with fixed assets. And then the due to and from says, so those are the general fund, $7,554.22. That number was near $800,000 four months ago. And again, because we closed all of the cash accounts for the reserves to cover the obligation of the general fund, and then later uncommitted the actual liabilities for those funds, we cleaned up the amount owed to the general fund down to a real level now. And again, by saying, the water firm's fund balance indicates a surplus of $852, which is a misnumber, all of that is infrastructure that still doesn't cover our obligations. Right here, we're already $218,000 behind. That was primarily debt paid on the 1st of July. They haven't done any kind of a lien yet. So that's long-term debts.
That's that number that Carter was talking about earlier.
Yes, Carter, that was the 166.
Right.
So oddly, most long-term debts, that an interest payment due and a principal and interest due in either May or June, yours is structured, it says that July 1st it's due, at the beginning of the fiscal year, as opposed to the end of the fiscal year. It's okay. So that's a quick rundown of what you have, what you owe, what you were. And again, we're still working on FY '25, still has invoices coming in. The auditors, we're gonna speak with tomorrow at 3 o'clock. And with luck and success and voter approval, in December, we will report that things are looking uprightly in terms of cash flow.
Okay, council members, any questions for Chip? I don't know about you, but I feel like I'm beginning to get this. Like, it's making more sense to me.
Then it's about to change.
Okay, so don't get, don't get cocky.
And will the task force be meeting Friday at 4:00, 5:00?
Yes, right, Carter? Oh yeah, we're back to our fun Friday afternoon at times together, Chip. Are there any questions from anyone in the community for Chip before we let him go tonight? Chip, as always, we're deeply grateful for all your work and for your teaching, because it really does help us to fully understand what's going on, or at least more partially understand what's going on.
All right.
Okay.
And I will see the task force Friday, and I'll see you tomorrow. Are we meeting at 9:00 tomorrow morning?
No, no meeting tomorrow morning, but yes, we're on with the auditors tomorrow afternoon.
Okay, see you then.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chip.
Good night, everyone.
Okay, everybody. I think what I'm gonna recommend is that we take a two-minute stretch break, and I'm gonna go fix that warning and bring it back, because we're in the middle of a long evening, and people are probably tired. So this is your bathroom break, and I will be right back. We're still meeting officially, just so you all know. The minutes you're signed. Okay, as we start again, I'm just gonna pause for a moment to allow council members time to sign that special meeting warning that we agreed on earlier. Okay, are we ready? The next item is the task force reports, which I think are all verbal this evening, so we'll start with financial reporting and fiscal practices, Carter.
Sweet. So we talked about communications a lot. So we didn't have one on Friday. I was absent for the last one, because I had wedding obligations out of state. So, but the hottest topic, if you guys wanna come join us on Friday, we're gonna have to start talking about our communications plan for everything that we've just been talking about. I even just touched base with Lori in that little break. So that's gonna be front and center, as well as starting to do that deep dive analysis of our expenditures and how they're organized. Though, just again, addressing, I was not there for the last meeting. Is there any permit that other members that were present would like to share?
I think we're good.
Okay, please.
Thank you. Water and sewer, John and I apologize, because one of the many things I didn't get to today was the note I promised to send to you and others with the minutes from the last meeting, so I'll do that first thing tomorrow.
Okay, and I missed the last meeting, so I don't really know where we're at. I know we're meeting this Thursday at 6:30 to continue onward, and I think water meters are probably the priority item still.
Yes, the two big things that we spent the conversation on last time were the water meter question, how we move ahead on that. And there's a pretty good strategy, I think, for doing that. And then the other was the ordinance changes that Paul Tice has been reviewing and making suggestions on. That's where I think we are. Anything else, John?
No.
Okay. Kevin, you got anything you want to say about where we are with housing insecurity, public encampments, and community safety?
Yes, in our last meeting, we started reviewing an ordinance that would give some direction to law enforcement. We've identified some resources as well, and we're gonna continue working and try to merge them both, make them one cohesive document.
That mean next one is taking place this Wednesday?
Yeah, 16.
Yeah, so we're not meeting this week. We meet a week from Wednesday.
The first and...
First and third Wednesdays.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Andrew, anything to add about the fire department strategic planning task force?
Nothing yet, other than we are going to have our first meeting on Monday, the 14th, at 6:00 PM. So we're gonna, that's gonna be a meet and greet, and then we are going to come up with a plan to who is going to take which tasks and set some certain tasks and stuff together. Divvy those up, and then we can, everyone can focus on some things, and that's gonna be, that'll be our starting point, I guess.
Great. So a meet and greet, does that mean you're also providing refreshments personally?
I think the note said the mayor was going to. I'm not sure if I thought.
Fair enough. All right, moving along then. I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel evaluation at the staff person's request as per 1 DSA Section 313A3, and invite council members and Department of Public Works head Tom Bernier into that meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Friends will be with you as soon as we can. Thank you for your patience. Chip, you're back up and running. And let's see, we have people, we're all back in the same room electronically?
Yes.
Okay, we are out of executive session. No action was taken, and we're gonna move on to item number eight on the agenda. This is a report from Marlena Valenta on the Tiny Art Project with Newport Downtown Development.
Hello, everybody. I believe you saw a presentation from another committee member, Robin, probably about a month ago, kind of outlining the basic kind of grant, which will you go to the, it's like, we'll go over a little bit of what it is. So the whole idea is to find spots around town that could maybe use a little TLC, things that are broken, things that are old, that are not necessarily priorities, because they're very small, or they're out of the way, whatever it is, and ask artists to be creative in the way that they fix them. And so it's made to be low-cost, to be completely unique to Newport, to support local artists, and to make it a really fun, you know, almost hide-and-seek for these little spots around town. And so we got together as a committee and were able to find multiple spots that could definitely use a little TLC. And then we put together an RFP, I think maybe go to the next. Yeah, so this is what I just said, why it's so great. You can go to the next. So we put together an RFP, a request for proposals, and put it out. And we got a lot of really great proposals from local artists. And they really ranged, we got high school students and art teachers and professional artists and amateur artists, and from all through the Northeast Kingdom, and in a lot of different mediums too. So you'll see as we walk through them, it really ranges, and it's really exciting to see. So we just met as a committee and went through and picked the projects that we want to move forward with right now. And we're basically asking permission. We're saying, hey, are we good to move forward? Because they're on city property. We have the funding, we've applied for grants. And yeah, I think we can start looking at them. So this, the poll that you see on the left is the one we originally planned on doing, but it sounds like that's actually going to get replaced very soon, right?
Tom, do you want to say word about that?
I, we're still waiting for partner. I have the whole, I was told late July to get the backup.
Yeah, and so we didn't know if that was going to be, you know, months long, years long. So we originally looked at that, but in hearing that it's going to be so soon, we pivoted to the missing pole in front of Pick and Shovel. And so it's going to be, the project that we selected is this ceramic tower that's all different pieces from an artist that does ceramics. And so, yeah, it's going to stand there in front of Pick and Shovel and be a really cool kind of focal point on the street.
Tom, since we've got you here, is there anything we should know about this pole? Does it, like, I just happened to notice it.
Mystery pole.
And I don't think I ever noticed what was there until I noticed something wasn't there.
It was a light pole there. That was taken out by a truck, I'm assuming. The problem, commentary, since we had it designed to be rebuilt back in 2010, we have it. Getting power to that pole, it was actually about overhead, it's now challenging.
So actually putting something...
Nobody's complained about the lighting, because I think Pick and Shovel, the folks out have enough lighting there that nobody's complaining about it, so I wasn't pursuing it.
Okay, so maybe artwork on this spot would be good for a while.
Sure.
Okay. That's great, I didn't know the backstory on that.
So there's some kind of missing tiles, broken tiles, spots on the Newbury Building that could use some upgrades. And so we had someone suggest or propose a little fairy door and some little ceramic peaks to come throughout. So again, this is a project that, you know, instead of needing to invest in completely redoing the facade, it's going to have these really fun, unique little pieces that are done by local artists. Okay, next up. So this is submitted by a high school student who wants to highlight the fact that the skate park is a part of our park. And so one of the entry bridge sides will be this skate park mural. And this is going to be the other side. And so this is Vermont, Florin, Fana. Yeah, it's gorgeous, it speaks for itself. And then this is not the proposed artwork. This was what the artist sent us to show some of their, like, calligraphy and writing. But the sign is going to be, this is down by Gateway. It covers some utility stuff, but it's, you know, just a blank board that's looking a little rough. And so it's going to be a welcome sign that talks about Lake Men from Agod, and it's going to include the original Abenaki name for Lake Men from Agod. So the idea was to kind of have some of Lake Men from Agod's history and just use this as a welcome sign, because it really is like right off the gateway. As you're walking up, it's, you know, a really great opportunity to highlight more about the lake and more about Newport. And then this is a fire hydrant that will get a little field of flowers right downtown, right in front of the library. And, yeah. And so we're just basically looking to get the go-ahead on these. I'm able to answer any, I shouldn't say I'm able to answer any questions. I'm willing to answer any questions, and Felicia can help out if there's anything I can't answer.
Timeline?
So we're hoping to have, we're going to let everyone know ASAP, and we're hoping to have them done by August, end of August. So we'll have the artists working kind of through the rest of the summer, and we're hoping to find some ways that the public can watch the installation process and at the end do kind of like a unveiling of all of them, have, you know, be able to go around town and tour all the different spots. And so that's the idea in kind of keeping them on the same timeline so that we can really make sure that they're all, you know, presented at the same time, and people can really enjoy them, so what they are is kind of a tour around town.
Can we have, in addition to the people that design them or make them, like an index size card that you find in a museum where they're, you know, made by, so they can get recognition?
A little plaque, I think that's a really great idea. We haven't really discussed that, but I think that that would be really awesome, especially because, as you're saying, it's all different local artists. It would be great to highlight that.
I'll just say about that, interestingly, I don't know if you all have noticed, but eight of the 10 sculptures are now mounted. We just have two left to put up.
Yeah.
And you'll see them much more at night because they're backlit. They stand out a lot more at night. And we have little plaques to mount on each of those that we haven't put up yet that give the name of the artist who did each one as well.
Those are lit up too, you said?
The sculptures are all lit up, yeah. You can see them, like the mountain bike one that's on the side of Urgent Care, you can see as you come down the street. And there's now, we just mounted last week, the skater, which I love, this beautiful skater figure that's now on the, you see it coming this direction, coming up Main on the side of the Newbury Building. And again, they'll really pop at night, which of course, in a couple of months, will be most of the time, so it's dark here a lot. So those are almost done. We have one left for the side of this building and one for the gateway.
My question was around like tiers of support. So like, so they have an idea. Is there people within the committee that can help support or like work through some of the articles they were having picking up? Like, I'm thinking about the preschooler, but this is a big project.
Yes, and actually, that's something that we already discussed as a committee was basically, how can we ensure success for the student? Because, yeah, it is, it's a big project, which is really exciting. It's awesome to be able to add that to their portfolio and to be able to give them this experience. But, so we have, actually, their former art teacher is on the committee, and so she's agreed to offer any assistance that's needed. And then the other person doing the other mural has also offered to help, and she's a very experienced muralist. And so, yes, there is a lot of support, and that's been part of the discussion, is making sure that like, through this process, we can support the local artists and make sure that all of these are successful, because, you know, obviously, we want these to be as successful as possible. They're going to live in our community. Yeah, I think we have a really good support system.
Any other questions from Marlena? Tom's got a question, go ahead, Tom.
Just curiosity, did the painting of that fire hydrant, did you know that the bondant was supposed to be green, or was that just left it green?
Yes, no, so we knew it needed to be green, I believe. That's the one part that can't be painted, right?
Right.
So that was...
Yeah, just curious. You can paint all of the ones you want, just keep, yeah, make sure the bondant stays the color that it is. It might be faded, you can write an upper green, but that green or orange or blue, it's the gallons of per minute that we get out of the hydrant and fire crack.
That's actually good to know. I would have assumed just don't touch it at all, so.
No, I like the idea.
Awesome.
Okay. Thank you, Marlena. And Felicia, thank you to the committee.
So we have, or you're going to vote on it?
Make a motion to approve the proposal as presented by the...
I guess we are, because we got a motion. We got an anxious second. Any other comment or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries with great gratitude to the committee and the artists as well. We're thrilled. Yeah, we needed that little pick-me-up in the middle of a long evening, so thank you, Marlena, for hanging around. I put you in the middle on purpose. Go home, I know you've got kid responsibilities.
He's long asleep.
All right, item number nine. This is the briefest of reports, actually. Chip referred to it earlier. I just wanted to let you all know. We had some conversation in the finance, Financial Reporting and Fiscal Practices Task Force about whether we should try and do an RFP to seek new proposals from companies that could do our audit for us. And it's actually two audits. It looks like we're going to need to do another single audit around grant funding, because we've gone over the threshold of the total amount of grant income that would then trigger that single audit, as well as the audit that we need to do for the last fiscal year 24, 25. It's not possible to take in RFPs now for those two audits that are time-sensitive and have to be done right away. So I will be meeting tomorrow with Chip and the folks at KBS to be clear about what it is, make sure that we are all on the same page about what it is we're looking for in the audits this year. And we'll bring back a report on timing, I hope, what they expect to do. And then we'll still go through the process of an RFP, I expect, later in the year, in the calendar year, in preparation for next year to make sure that we've got the company we want. So, okay? Any questions about that? Item number 10. This is one that I have spent a lot of time thinking about, how best to do this. And so I just want to lay out a, I've sent a memo to the council. Many of you have seen it. What I'm recommending is that tonight, we're really just discussing process. I don't expect it to take very long. And that we, the process for the review of the personnel policy would functionally really begin two weeks from now, and that we would let the public know, starting now, if it's your will to do so, that we will have a period where it's dedicated to anyone who would like to come and share concerns about the personnel policy. We would do it on a timeline, you know, with two to three-minute time limits on each person, and give folks who, there are many people who have written, I'd say, I don't know, eight or 10 probably, who I've heard from, who have specific concerns. So it would be a chance for them to share their specific concerns for the council to hear. And then, based on the public comments at that meeting and based on the two documents that I sent you and warned in the packet this week, which are the previous version of the personnel policy and the current version that was passed in February of 2024, you have those documents now. And so I'm hoping that council members will review those documents in preparation for the next meeting, and together with the comments we get from the community, that those documents will provide any questions that you would like to specifically have answered. So we'll, together that evening, create a list of questions, and then we will share those questions. If we follow this recommendation, we would then ask a representative from VLCT, if possible, be with us at the following regular meeting to come and talk with us about best practices, and specifically to answer the questions, to make sure that they have the questions in front of them that we have put to them. And then also, at that, probably at that same meeting, unless it just looks like it's going to be too long and we may need to put it off yet another meeting, we would invite legal counsel from SP&amp;F, the firm that was just represented by Dave Root tonight, to join us to offer any further comments based on those questions. Probably that would be John Klash, who is their person who really helps us most with the personnel matters at this point. And then, either that evening, if we've done, gotten through both of those presentations, or at the following meeting, depending on how long it's feeling like it's going to take for these things to happen, then the council would actually deliberate about the best path forward. I expect we would do that in public and not in an executive session, because it's a matter of policy and not a specific matter related to a particular employee. And then finally, my hope is that even if this draws out a little longer, we would have it resolved by the end of August. And the resolution would either be to allow the policy to stand as it is or to make any modifications that council desires. So those are my recommendations, that I suspect could be improved upon. So I'd love to hear from council if you have thoughts about how you would like to improve upon those recommendations or change them entirely, if you'd like.
I have not personally had time to review the differences between, from the 2014 version to the most current version. So I would really like to review those, or to make any, you know, I'm sure there'll be, a lot of my questions will be answered within that, or, you know...
Or maybe it'll raise more questions.
Right. It'll raise more questions as to why maybe some... I do know that it was taken about half the pages. It was cut about half from...
Yes, from like over 100 pages, down to about 60. Kevin?
During this process, will there be a time to hear from the non-unionized members? I mean, there were some that were on the original committee, if it were. However, many years ago, like, three, four? And they are well versed in what they would like to see going forward. And there are certainly things in this policy that we as a council need to discuss.
So it's a great question. My inclination, unless we receive advice, I have not asked this question of legal counsel, but unless we receive advice that it's inappropriate, there are certainly members of our staff who have felt free to come and speak with council as a staff person about the impact of this in the past. So I would invite them to speak during open session as well, unless we get advice from council that that's inappropriate and we should be in executive session for that. And, you know, I suppose it's possible that we could hear from a staff person that they don't feel comfortable speaking in open session, and at that point, I haven't, honestly, I haven't gotten this far, but we could ask, we could in fact have an executive session just to hear from a particular staff person. You would have to do that, warning it, you would have to warn that special session, that executive session, around an individual. So you couldn't do that and then have three or four or five employees come and speak during that time. So I'm inclined to do it publicly if we can.
And maybe John would be the best to tell us which way, because certainly, I want to differentiate, you know, a staff's, what they have to say from the general public comments. I mean, it's, is there an idea that, I guess, I don't know how that would work.
One way or another, we can certainly hear from staff people who are concerned. I expect they would be given voice in this process. So if it's the will of the council, I would be happy to explore first with, probably with John, if there are any concerns that I'm not aware of that would require it to be executive session.
And could you take that one step further? If it is required for executive sessions, can you ask if any of the non-union employees, if they can join together as a group? Because I'm sure that a lot of their concerns are the same. With what they would like to see.
My main question was around gathering public comment or the, you know, that period. What does that look like? Is that a genuine questionnaire that you distribute to all at current? And maybe ask employees?
That's not my recommendation.
No, okay.
But if that's the will of the council, we could do it. But honestly, no, I'm recommending we do it in open... People can have two minutes to speak.
Okay, okay.
Or three. But...
I get the cap on that, but I also think like we limit the feedback we get. Not even just because of the, I don't know, if it were me and it were my job and there was something I deeply wanted to talk about and have evidence, and I don't know if speaking is the best way to convey, but I think that would be our job. I hear that, that we would need to document and understand and hopefully transcribe those concerns, but, I don't know, I just, I don't think that's everybody's cup of tea.
I think they probably want to do, you know, with most of their concerns, they may want to be in an executive session.
Other thoughts?
I agree with what's been said about at least inquiring as to the permissible use in executive session if employees, for instance, want to... I agree with that. So some people may not be comfortable about discussing their specific circumstances or how the policy impacted in their circumstances.
Okay. You know, I'm thinking that, so why don't, I'll explore that with John this week. And if the answer is that it is appropriate, if requested, to be in executive session to hear that, or even required, if John says it should be an executive session, then I think what I would do is inform employees that they have until a certain time, probably a Thursday or Friday before the meeting, to let them know, so that we can warn the meeting with specific employees in mind for each of those executive sessions.
Should it be handled the same way that we deal with contract negotiations with the public works and the police, for example?
You'd have to be more specific, Kevin, what do you mean? What do you mean?
I mean, separate meetings, basically. I mean, I, I understand that I, I think it's important to get the public comment on that, the personnel policy, but there are certain things I don't know how to phrase it without seeing, you know, where it comes down to some of the monitoring things in the policy. They're obviously going to want to keep whatever is beneficial to them. On the other hand, we as the city are looking at it like, we don't have that kind of money to be paying for everything. You know, it's a give and take and it can get ugly.
So are you suggesting that we would have a separate meeting? I'm not, I'm really not sure what you're proposing. I don't understand.
I don't know whether we would have the time in the regular medium to, to give it the attention it deserves.
So I guess here's one thought off the, off the top of my head. I want to be careful not to give the impression that we are doing some kind of collective bargaining with non-unionized employees at the city. That's not what we're doing here.
Right.
Right? What we're doing is allowing people who have felt any kind of way about personnel policy changes that have taken place to share how they feel in order to help inform the council's deliberations about the policy that we're going to use going forward. So I don't want to, I would not propose, I would not recommend that we hold a special meeting to hear collectively from those employees because for me, that implies something that looks much more like collective bargaining that's not what we're about here.
Right. And again, I, I'm not, I'm not sure how to, to go forward with this. I mean, I do think John would have guidance.
Okay. So let's see what John's guidance is. And, you know, I, in the, in the year and a half that I've been involved, almost a year and a half now on council, there have been several moments when employees of the city have spoken during public comment and open session about their concerns. So there are certainly some people who are willing to do it in that kind of context. And there may be others who feel uncomfortable doing it. Meeting with those folks individually to give them the, the, to afford them some privacy in making their comments feels like a courtesy that could be helpful, that I'm certainly willing to consider. Okay. Tom?
Yep.
Couple of things I just, you mentioned getting the packets of the 2014 version and then the one that was approved last February. Does anybody have the one that was actually worked on prior to it?
What I want to do, I, I hear that. I know there's another piece out there. I suspect it will come up more than enough in our public comment. And all we have to work with formally is what was approved by the council in 2014 and what was approved by council in 2024. So tonight, my focus is on the process. And I think if we create an open up process, there will certainly be opportunity for people to raise questions about the intervening conversations.
Because I think we've talked about it, we worked on it for quite some time. The department had.
Understood. I don't want to go there, but tonight.
But we, but I just want to, wanted to add to it that VLCT was involved. We use their template from.
Right. I'm hearing that and you'll have a chance to say it. I don't want to get in there to that conversation tonight because I'd be pretty firm about that. Because honestly, it's not the right time for us to try and take this on. We're all worn out by it. Okay. So the goal here is to create a process by which the council can be as fully informed as possible about the, what's led us to this moment and just as importantly, what, what is considered best practice to help us make a decision about going forward. All right. So it's not, I'm not only interested in hearing about what, what took place in the past to get us to this moment, I'm also interested in hearing about what, what would a responsible council be doing to make sure that we have the best possible practice in place? Okay? I don't think there's a need for a vote on this. I think you're just giving advice to me as mayor to, about the questions you would like to have answered. And I will do my best to craft an agenda that reflects the memo and your concerns you've raised tonight, which I've taken some notes on. Any other comments or question? Okay. Thank you. The next one is equally short or even shorter. There are copies on the desk up here if anybody would like to take one with them tonight. I'll just give a little bit of background. We have had far more vendor permit requests this year than we have had in the past, and they tend to be going deeper and more extensive than the ones we've had in the past. I suspect it's a sign of the economy and the desire of local people in the community to be creative about where income is going to come from. And Frank has been working hard to try and be consistent and fair about the way licenses and permits are applied on private property. And we ran into a problem or a challenge roughly a month ago when we had a permit request for someone to set up over in the gazebo area of Gardner Park, basically six days a week kind of through the summer. And we all agreed that we needed to take a look at this. So what you have before you, council members, the document I put on your space tonight when we came in, I asked Chris Beshan to take some of the thinking that I had heard about kind of, well, actually what it was mostly was how Frank has tried to apply the consistency on the private land issue and to try and make it apply on our public land. And Chris looked at best practices in other places. I think he depended a little bit on ChatGPT. And he came up with some recommendations. I have a question about how to proceed, which I don't think, I'm not recommending we take any action on this tonight. I'm recommending we do some thinking on it. And John, I would look to you because I didn't even really understand until today that the current policy is related to the peddler permits. Where Jim gets his wisdom currently is from the ordinance on peddler permits. And I didn't fully understand until Frank showed me today this giant book full of ordinances that are enforceable by the police department. And if we want to change an ordinance, it requires, as I understand it, two weeks' notice and I think, and two public meetings before the council would take action. So if we're headed for a new ordinance, we're going to have to think about that. And John, I'm really going to ask for help on this, like as we craft that process over the next, you know, few weeks or a month. So they, somebody who better understands the process of ordinances than I do can kind of help us through it. I, I honestly, I was naive, as I've been so many times before in the last four months. I thought it was just a policy, council could take action, create a new policy, and we would implement it as consistently as possible. But it sounds to me like there's at least some question about whether it can, it would, it needs to be an ordinance shift. So if there, if there are questions about that tonight, I'm happy to get them out of the table. But I would recommend that we come back to this in two weeks with some clearer thinking about the question around the ordinance and any specific questions you have about the document itself. And then try and figure out our next step from there. Does that sound okay?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Laura.
So at the last meeting or the meeting before you, you signed permission for a couple of people for a short-term permit. How is now this new process gonna, going to affect them?
Well, I should say that I was never, I tried twice to contact the permit in question, the person who, who applied for the permit in question, and they never got back to me. And I don't think they've been set up.
He's never shown up.
Yeah. So that one doesn't appear to be an immediate issue. And if it were, if he were to decide he wanted to do it, we clearly granted a one-month exception to the policy. And if he were to come back again, we would not grant. We would go with our reading of the older policy, which is basically unlimited number of days. It's basically the things that are, that are defined here.
Do we, I'm just, just reading through this. Do we currently, I know it's on the sheet, but do we get a copy of the general, I believe, insurance?
We do, Jim, Jim does require that and follows through it.
I know, I know it's on there, who their insurance provider is. I just.
I think we actually get the copy of the insurance cover, Jim, or no?
Yeah, we do. Part of that.
Kurt?
I was chatting on Fourth of July with Josie, who's at, who works in the recreation department. And she gets a pretty interesting insight in how, well, she's from Canada, so how other provinces handled it. And I, I was just like, whoa, that's really interesting. And then I, also she folded in alcohol sales, which then made me go, I don't know if there's any different, I know that there's a alcohol license that, you know, formal establishments, I would say formal establishments, just brick and mortar place would apply for it or a vote. We have a unique case there. But how that would fold in towards somebody who maybe would like to set up something at the softball field. But I don't know how that all meshes together. So basically, all I'm going to say is there is some insight, I think, in the community that in the next couple of weeks, I'd love to maybe either have them come speak about it or just kind of write and send to the council a note to say this is, this is how it works and it is pretty straightforward. And also maybe, last thought is folding in, we talked about that permit, the, the form itself and how we can maybe streamline that. I don't know if that's part of this piece. I feel like it's really key to address that, lift that up and make that clean to match our policy.
Yeah. I agree entirely that the process at the moment is extremely unwieldy and not helpful to the community. So I would expect that we would try and address that probably as a function of the office, not, not the council, but someone in the, in the offices here would help us do that. Adam?
Speak to Amy Gillespie because she had to turn.
Speak up, it's hard to hear.
Speak to Amy Gillespie because she had to turn cartwheels around all the peddler stuff, some of which she did for farmers markets, some of which she did for the warehouse building, tasting center. And when she's done her events, again, she has to negotiate that, but she's done a lot of work on that.
Yep. Good idea.
As far as the liquor stuff, they have to apply through the Department of Liquor Control. They don't apply through us. And if they want, if somebody wants to supply at the library, if they ever serve wine or something, it has to be served. They just can't bring wine and do it, it has to be served by somebody who has a liquor license.
So when they apply, the final step of the process is the city council's approval? Is that how that works, Jim?
You approve, send the application back, then the control get approved and they send the personnel license.
Got it. Thank you.
Well, and a lot of those too are, you have to engage somebody who has a caterer's license, for instance, the Eastside.
If you're serving, you want to serve it, then you can't serve it. It's got to be served by somebody that has a, their license with catering permit.
So they're taking responsibility.
So exactly. So the Eastside restaurant, for instance, has a catering license in addition to their on-premise licenses that allow them to do on-premise events. But there are a lot of rules that were made to on-premise events and outdoor events generally.
Yeah. And I want to be clear, I don't think we're trying to take that on in this discussion, right? Like, I'm not trying to, I'm not recommending we're trying to tinker with any of that. I'm saying what we're really trying to mess with here is the question of vendor permits in particular.
If they want, if somebody wants in the catering, they have to apply, go ahead, it's all for catering.
Okay. Okay. All right. No action needed on that one. We'll be back. The next one is item 12. Man, just a slight, a quick explanation. The contract that we have had between the City of Newport and the Village of Derby to purchase water from the Village of Derby contains two provisions in it for the, the termination of that contract, which is necessary and appropriate because we're about to bring the new Eastside Water Tower online and we will no longer have to purchase water for the, for the, our residents who are up on that east side that we haven't been able to get water to in the past. So when that happens, two things are required by contract. One is that this council has to vote to advise the Village of Derby that we intend to terminate the contract. We're supposed to do that 60 days in advance of the termination. And that gives them time for their select board to be advised and to take a vote to accept that termination. And then at the moment of termination, we have to pay a fee of $30,000 by contract to the Village of Derby for potential loss of, potential or real loss of income due to the loss of those customers. So in a perfect world, we would have done this about a month and a half ago. And between Tom and I, we fumbled the process. We, we actually had conversation with the Village of Derby, with their, the person there who's managing their affairs. And she re-informed us of the need to have the vote. And Tom and I were running too fast in too many directions and we didn't get it to you all. So technically, if it's true that we're going to try and switch over to the new water tower three or four weeks from now, we should have done this over a month ago. I've reached out to Betsy from the Village of Derby to apologize that we missed it and to let her know that we intend to take action tonight. And she has let, let me know in return that she intends to put it before the select board in, in the village next Monday night. So in fact, I think we'll get through this process in plenty of time. But I'm not sure if that means we're going to have to go one more month or how it might play itself out. In any case, what's clear to me is that we need a motion tonight. We need to act tonight to, on a motion to advise the Village of Derby that we intend to terminate the contract as soon as the water tower is online, which we expect to happen in the next four to six weeks. Is that about the right timeline, Tom? Could be less, but I'd say it's probably a month out. Are there any questions about that process? Somebody want to put a motion forward? Yep. That motion?
That motion.
Okay. So Jim, I'll just repeat the motion that Kevin's making for us. The city council is acting to advise the city, the Village of Derby that we intend to terminate the contract for purchase of water as soon as the new water tower comes online, which we expect to be roughly four weeks out.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second.
I have a question. That $30,000, will that come from water and sewer?
Yes, I think it will come from water. That's where it will come. And yes, we have counted on that in our, in our cash flow projections. I think we thought of everything in Jim's brain that might be coming up, so.
I have nothing left in my brain to tell you about that.
So, and go ahead.
Does the contract have a normal termination date that would suggest that we should keep the contract until the end of the contract and not pay the $30,000?
There is no end of contract.
Okay.
No. This is, this was going to be a requirement, this $30,000 was going to be a requirement when, whenever we terminate the contract. If that's how the contracts were. Any other questions? Hearing none. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. Jim and Tom, I'm going to rely on the two of you to help me make sure that we send the copy of the minutes tomorrow to Betsy in Derby, please. Just make sure between us that we don't, leave that off. Okay. Here's the next one. Background on this, you have some documentation in front of you. We applied for a grant a number of years ago, I don't know how many, a bunch, four or five at least, I think, to engineer and remodel the Coventry traffic light and intersection. It's a $200,000 grant that was awarded by the state under Frank's direction and guidance in the last, about six months or eight months ago, I think. He negotiated with the state because we had gone past the deadline without appropriate documentation. And he managed to convince the state that we should still be in play. They were very cooperative and agreed to do so. However, it is Frank's and my recommendation at this point that we back away from that agreement and inform the state. agreement and inform the state that we do not intend to take the money and the reason is that it requires at least $150,000 in match money and the budget for this thing I think was $400,000 four years ago wasn't it Tom roughly and by any reasonable measure those costs will have ballooned since then and it's I would have some concern that we would have just put significant money into redeveloping that intersection which could easily be impacted and changed dramatically by the implementation of the master plan so for those three reasons our recommendation to the council is that we agree to basically say thank you to the state but we're not prepared to take the grant at this time and we'll be back at some point in the future when we know better what our plans should be and when we're in a better position to do so.
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion let's just see if we can frame it concisely for Jim a motion to inform the state oh you have it here thank you can you read it for me please?
It's the city in Newport Shawn move to terminate the proper notice grant agreement 07110-dtf-2022-09 associated with the Coventry Street and Main Street Improvement Project held by the Vermont Agency of Commerce and Community Development.
I have a motion which Andrew will hand to you Jim it's in your packet but he'll give you this. I have a motion do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second actually we should probably all sign that I think or.
We're sorry.
I have a motion and a second any further comment or question hearing none all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay motion passes and if we'll all sign that and hand it back to Jim thank you Andrew I could not find that document in my pilot here we are nearing the end y'all thank you for your patience tonight this council's the longest meeting that we've done since I got elected mayor. That's true Pam knows however that we've done 15 times the amount of time in session. Pass that back to Kevin please okay I would entertain a motion at this point to go into executive session for the purpose of interviewing a candidate for the position of financial and office administrator as per 1BSA section 313A3 and invite the council members and our potential candidate who is here with us tonight into that session.
So moved.
I have a motion do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay motion carries we are in executive session. Thank you for your patience everyone and for hanging in there in a long evening Jim are we all set?
Yeah.
Okay Pam you're back in business.
I'm back on.
Okay we are out of executive session and Carter are we back online with everyone?
Yep.
Great we're out of executive session no action was taken in executive session.
Okay and are you ready for a motion?
Yeah go ahead.
Oh sorry leave a sheet of paper there we go so I move that the mayor be authorized to move ahead with the potential candidate for the position of financial and office administrator by arranging a meeting with department heads and assuming that goes well council designees Tuchet and Charbonneau will negotiate a compensation package.
I have a motion do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second any comment from the council?
I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay so Carter's going to recuse herself I think actually it's not even appropriate to take other public comment tonight since we're just moving along in a process that we're trying to make as open as we can so we have a motion and a second Carter has recused herself all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay motion carries thank you very much moving on to item number 15 public comment who we got on there?
Sandy Cadell.
I think Sandy has left.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is why I have just a quick story we used to do we used to do meetings where we would have Quaker Process where you have to have unity in the group and we had an old guy who we just all loved and was a mentor to many of us who would say that he practiced consensus by attrition by the time we were done everybody was gone he had consensus and we could move on go ahead Andrew.
Have you lost that Anne?
No no I think I've said enough.
And then Maury.
Maury?
I'm just going to reiterate what I say at every meeting if the community has questions about any of the financial things they need to contact council members and anyone on the financial task force we are here to answer questions I've already started writing a document hopefully to present to our task force that will be the kind of basis of of information going out we have lots of answers that we want to share with the community and we're just asking people to ask us questions it's really better to ask questions than to assume that we haven't done anything so because we are working very hard and we're working on getting answers.
Thank you Maury anybody else on those okay moving on to item 16 new business Carter?
John.
John?
I'm.
Kevin?
No.
Okay I have nothing of new business old business Carter?
John?
Kevin?
No.
Jim?
No.
I'm just going to let folks know first of all that I thought that the 4th of July celebration was super fabulous pretty amazing I've heard nothing but affirmation I need to wait for a moment for you there Jim pretty amazing and that there were a lot of people in that park on Saturday night oh Saturday night Friday night Friday night and I also want to just say that Markel who came with a request that we do an event over the Labor Day holiday for a large event in Gardner Park you remember that a big concert that we turned down but said if you want to try something on a much smaller scale we're open to it he worked with Mike Brown and used the basketball court ice rink in Gardner Park on Saturday most of the day for a three-on-three basketball tournament in fact I think it's on the front page of the express today actually there's a picture of him playing he said he got pressed into service because a couple of the teams didn't have full complement when they showed up and it was a good day I dropped in on it three different times there was a DJ playing music the music was appropriately a kind of toned in terms of music and content I thought it was a great day I thought and just want to affirm that that worked well and I hope we'll have further conversation I think that's it tonight next regular council meeting is incorrect on the agenda it's supposed to be June 21 if I remember correctly.
July.
July oh yeah it's not June either it was a little late when I was working on this so do I have a motion to set our next regular council meeting for July 21st 2025?
So.
I have a motion second and a second all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay motion carries and I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Here we go.
I'll adjourn.
Second.
Second all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay motion carries thank you council members for a long evening.